On the line. Just want to make sure, Councilor Gillio. I'm waiting for Councilor Gillio. All right, 7:05 on the 15th of April, and I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. If you would join me in the flag slip, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I apologize for the slight delay. We were having a work session with our friends from the Water Control District, and it was productive, so, thank you. With that, is there any announcements addition to the agenda? Julia, any declaration of ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, bias accepted from anybody? No? Opportunity for public comment? I think Julie Boxler signed up, but I want to make sure that it's... Now's the time, Julia, you want to do it now, or you want to wait till the... Community grants, right? Okay. We'll wait for that then. Anybody else want to sign up, or have interest in speaking? Doesn't sound like it, so we'll wait for that, okay? With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Has Council had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda? And if so, what would you like to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ork.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved to approve the consent agenda as submitted and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor Ork.
I just want to say, Lucas... Oh, he's here. No, I don't see him. Thank you for... Lucas Joyce is joining our planning commission in the student position. And this has been something since I got on council that I wanted this position filled with a student. And I'm so excited to hear that we're going to have this representation. So, thank you, Lucas, for taking that step. And, yeah, that's really cool.
Yeah, very much so. Lucas, if you look at his resume right now, he's got a lot on his plate, so... Very ambitious young gentleman, so, very nice. Okay, with that, all those in favor of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Now, these are sort of presentations, Republic Services update. Julia?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a tag team of Travis and Cindy, and they're going to come up and give you an update. This is partly when we did the update of the franchise agreement. They committed to coming to you on a more regular basis and giving you updates. And so I think it's in part that, and then to let you know a little bit of information about some stuff that's coming down the pipe as well.
Okay, thanks, you. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Cindy Rogers, and I work at Republic Services.
Is the button on?
Is that better?
Can you just pull it up a little bit closer? There you go. Thank you.
Take two. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Cindy Rogers, and I am the Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services. And I'm joined here this evening with Travis Comfort. He is our municipal contract administrator. And before I start into the presentation, I did just want to make a quick little announcement. We did have our first bulky waste event on March 30th. And I just wanted to report that we collected nearly four tons. I think that's pretty good, considering that was our first event. And next time, we're already working with staff to be able to get the message out better. And so I think, we let everybody know that there'll be another event that came through. So I think that the next event will be even more successful. So I challenge everybody to beat the four tons, so... Anyway, our presentation this evening is a brief overview of the solid waste and recycling industry and the Recycling Modernization Act. I'll speak briefly on a few things that occurred in our industry over the last several years. And then I'll hand it off to Travis, and he'll talk about the Recycling Modernization Act, also known as the RMA. A couple of significant things occurred over the last several years that really shook the recycling industry in the United States. One was China Sword in 2018. China Sword was a major disruption to the flow of recycled commodities to markets where the buyers were interested in paying for the material to go to beneficial reuse. That disruption put supply and demand out of kilter, and it flooded the market and dropped the value of commodities drastically. We continue to see the impacts of China Sword to this day. The other thing that we've seen is a growing trend of environmental, social, and governance commitments, also known as ESGs, by both companies and municipalities across the country. This is mostly driven by customers. The good news is that China Sword and ESG commitments drove industry to look for better ways to improve the quality of the recycled material through automation, innovation, and additional investments. Republic Services has continued to lead the way in these arenas. As I mentioned, China Sword disrupted the flow of recycled materials to end markets. Thankfully, the industry was able to make adjustments by converting equipment that was designed for specialty paper to corrugated fibers or to containers. Also, we've seen investments in plastic circularity, which I'll discuss a little later. Oregon, Washington, New Jersey, and California have also passed legislation with minimum post-consumer content requirements, specifically for plastic beverage bottles. Extender Producer Responsibility, also known as EPR, looks to transfer the end-of-life responsibility for packaging from the consumer onto the producer. This is not a simple process, and Travis will go into that in more detail when he speaks on the Recycling Modernization Act. The next slide is regarding greenwashing. It's imperative that producers of material are in line with what can be realistically recycled, keeping in mind the limitations of sorting equipment, the end markets, which need to be reliable and responsible, and the value or lack thereof of the material, not to mention the necessity for the material to be empty, dry, and clean. That responsibility falls on the people using the products, and that's all of us. Their messaging should align with the capabilities of the recycling industry. Most plastic, like plastic water bottles, are downcycled and turned into carpet or textiles. What plastic circularity does is it keeps the material in circulation longer, taking beverage bottles that are recycled and turned into beverage bottles. Republic Services has made investments in what are called polymer centers. The first one in North America was in Las Vegas, or is in Las Vegas, I should say. The polymer center will produce a clear, hot-washed flake that can be turned into bottles by companies like Coca-Cola. We expect to eventually have many of these facilities and be able to receive material from across the country. This next slide shows companies, producers of consumer packaged goods, that have made commitments to higher post-consumer contact... content. So you can see, like, the different brands. I mean, these are brands that we all know, and then that shows their commitment level, you know, between 10 and even 50%. So I will go ahead and pass it over to Travis, and he'll speak on the Recycling Modernization Act.
Thank you, Cindy. Good evening, Mayor Quigley, Council. Ladies and gentlemen. My name is Travis Comfort. I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview on recycling history in Oregon, key points on the Recycling Modernization Act, and then what we have looking forward in the near future. While Oregon passed its first recycling law in 1971, which was the Bottle Bill, it took more than a decade later for it to mandate curbside recycling. The Opportunity to Recycle Act came out in 1983, just as Return of the Jedi hit theaters. Since then, DEQ has returned to the legislature for a couple of updates, mostly to increase recycling goals and add waste prevention measures. This is part of the OTR process that we work on with staff each year and report to the state. Cities with populations over 10,000 have to comply with all of the Oregon Recycling Modernization Act's requirements and OTR requirements. Thirty-five years of recycling and waste prevention efforts collapsed under the impact of China's National Sword policy, which took effect in 2018. As Cindy mentioned, China had been the number-one importer of recyclable materials for nearly two decades. So when that market collapsed, there was just no subsidy for the recycling industry in this country. This motivated DEQ to take action to return to the legislature for a whole system overhaul. In 2021, the legislature passed Senate Bill 582, the Oregon Recycling and Modernization Act. There were three key components to this. One was creating a uniform statewide collection list. This was so that everybody in the state was recycling the same things as everybody in Astoria, the same thing as Lake County. And then if you moved across Oregon, there wasn't any confusion. The second, as Cindy mentioned, the EPR legislation. This was to connect producers of the packaging and pollution to the recycling industry. As Cindy had come last year and talked to you guys about that disposal and recycling section growing so much, it was from 2018, and the cause of that market collapsing led to a lot of that disposal increase. And then last, they're going to make uniform education and outreach materials that'll be available to all cities and in virtually every language. And the different languages won't just be direct translations. They'll be, like, materials developed for those contexts. In this slide, I just wanted to layer over and show the kind of bird's-eye view of the situation. So as you can see, from 1992 to 2020, we'd never quite hit that 40% recovery goal that Oregon set. And then when they increased it to 50%, which is also in the RMA, we kind of started diverging from that. A good portion of the blue section up until about 2018, there was a sizable level of contamination in that, and that's partially what led to China Sword. On the second slide here, on Slide 12, I layered the population growth of Oregon over the consumption, and you can see that consumption outpaces population growth. The key to note here is that the only big impact to behavior was the Great Recession in 2008. Outside of that, the growth increase has remained steady. On Slide 13, you can see, this is the initial roadmap laid out by DEQ last year. This was the roadmap they hoped to follow. We're kind of at the end of the second round of rulemaking. First round of rulemaking, the state worked with the PRO and industry partners, such as Cindy mentioned earlier, to develop that list that you all have with you. This is the updated collection list. There's three components to that. One is the curbside collection list. The second is the updated depot list. And then the third is the PRO collection list, and I'll go over that stuff in a moment. So, PROs in Oregon, we do have experience with this in terms of, like, paint, e-waste, medications, and mattresses. In terms of mattresses, I did put an asterisk on there. The program was started before the RMA, and it's very similar. They're in their second planning phase. The PRO came back with a plan about three to four months ago about how they would try to roll it out and make it accessible. We couldn't make it work, so we gave that feedback back to them. And they're now working with DEQ. DEQ has rejected their first-round plan, and they have until September to submit a new plan to DEQ. So, there is experience in these kinds of models, and they can work, but they've been in a more limited capacity previously. Initially, when DEQ launched this process, there were four prospective PROs. All but one has dropped out of the application process. All the states on this map in red have passed EPR legislation. Washington is dark blue because they broke it into a piecemeal effort. They've passed some of it, some of it they haven't passed. And then the light blue, these ones have passed... Sorry. Lost my voice here. Oh, they've... Yeah. So they've introduced it. And then the purple, which is Maryland, they just passed a statewide survey. So no matter what their needs assessment says, it won't directly change the system. But these are the states taking direct action currently. On Slide 16, this timeline just came out two weeks ago from CAA. They're the last remaining PRO, and I'll go into them in a minute. They released this, but the keynote for Stateon to notice is that the second-round needs assessment has a shorter turnaround time, and they're going to be requesting more operational data. So as soon as Julia gets that, we'll work with them to make sure our operations team can get all of that stuff and that it's turned in on time.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you just go back really quick? So, a PRO is a nonprofit organization established to... It says administer a statewide program to manage paint, e-waste medications, and mattresses?
Yeah, so there's separate...
There's separate PROs for each of those.
And in Oregon, they don't all have to be nonprofits. So mattresses, and paint, and the RMA are going to be all nonprofits. But e-waste and medications, they can make a profit for facilitating that. So they're basically like a collective, so that, like, Coca-Cola doesn't have to do it in Oregon. The collective takes money from Pepsi, Coke, Arizona Tea, and then they pay, you know, to recycle that material. So it's kind of like a clearinghouse.
It's kind of like the bottle drop, where businesses pay into the bottle drop and then... Bottle drop facility, so it's kind of the same kind of thing?
Yeah, and that's kind of the one note I do have on glass, and we'll get to that later. But they're trying to decide if they want to be in the Bottle Bill or if they want to be in the RMA. They're very similar structures, because the Oregon Beverage Association had to basically build that program. And it shifted from about a 30-35% recovery rate to over 85% for beverage containers in Oregon. So the green bag has worked. The bottle drop system has definitely worked. Because it not only catered to the people that were already returning, but to people like me, who it's like, I would just throw in the recycling container. I didn't need to, like, I didn't have necessarily the time to take it down there. But if I can drop off three bags and walk right away, it's very easy and very convenient.
Thank you.
Sorry to be less clear and to go kind of fast. So, yeah, on Slide 17, I had included in the presentation, these are the notes from CAA on the initial list and what I provided with you guys in your handout. That's the finalized list from the first round of rulemaking. You can see things like convenience store cups, like Starbucks or 7-Eleven. They were initially a big concern, and they're a high-volume plastic item. But the idea of getting it into the stream empty, clean, and dry was such a concern that it was removed. You know, if you're enjoying your espresso out and about, you might throw it in a recycling container, but you might not wash it out and dry it before you do that. So, again, the best thing, even at-home recycling, is empty, clean, and dry before it goes into the container. The second list, as I mentioned, so previously in Oregon, before the RMA and before July 1st of next year, depots only had to take what they processed. The new minimum standard is going to be oil, metal, and glass. And then we're also working with the PRO for that third list, which you'll see the PRO-covered list items. These are typically hard-to-recycle items, and some of them already have processes, like through retail outlets for grocery bags. That part will remain. The PRO is working with haulers and cities to find other ways to collect some of these items. And we'll get into, like, shredded paper and other things. But the thing about, like, polystyrene and why I highlighted this one is this is a material that is incredibly hard to process. And specifically in the RMA, it's called out, there's no chemical processing to happen. So those will all go to mechanical processors going forward. Slide 21 gives you the topics that we reviewed with the city in the first-round needs assessment. It was very high-level, very generic. What do you have? What would you like to have? How does, you know, how do you close the gap between the new regulation and what you currently have? We got that in on time, and we'll work with staff to get the next one in on time as well. So there are two large fees that the PROs are going to have to pay to subsidize this system. And the first one is the processor contamination management fee and the processor commodity risk assessment fee. And this contamination fee, it might sound somewhat confusing in that... And I put this photo on here, this from the Silverton Saturday Recycle Center. So shredded paper went in their commingled recycling container. But in that system, it is contamination. So the processors, it gums up the machines, they don't process it that way. So this contamination fee will be to remove that material and put it into the right stream and get it recycled. So, and part of that is to also encourage the PROs to pump education and encourage the public to put that into the right stream, so... And then, so, the commodity risk assessment fee is to, again, to address that issue of China Sword that Cindy mentioned earlier. It will stabilize the rebate, basically, for the processors for that material. There will always be a market. And to get on the uniform statewide collection list, there had to be a responsible end market for all of those items. So on the core list, there are already processors recycling those materials. On Slides 23 and 24, you can see the initial figures of the per-ton rate DEQ is forecasting to cover those two fees. It's pretty dense, and we don't need to get into that today. But it's a little over a billion and a half dollars a year to cover those two components of the system. In terms of those responsible end markets, that's the component, and roll DEQ is going to take in permitting and certifying processors. DEQ can permit in-state processors, but they can only certify out-of-state processors. They just don't have any authority to permit companies or organizations out of the state. So there's no material difference between those in this sense. The only classification would be if they're in-state or out-of-state. And a big component of this, and even some in-state processors are struggling with, is the paying a living wage component going forward. So, there's many components to this. Some of the rules could change by the end of the second round of rulemaking. But we will know by September, A, the final rulemaking decisions, but also the PRO's approved plan for going forward. That will also outline the funding availability, so we'll know where Stateon falls in the list, and then we can actually start planning with staff to move that, to roll that out. In the most recent legislative session, it was a short session. They did pass Senate Bill 1596, this is the right to repair. So this is to open up, you know, repair shops to get access to manuals and tools so that you're not, you know, forced to go to Apple or forced to go to Microsoft to fix your phone. And then upcoming legislation that's pretty important, House Bill 4049 is on PFOS. You might have seen that in the news lately. Federal government just banned it in drinking water in the United States. And then House Bill 4013 is the wine packaging I kind of referenced earlier. So because they had opted out and lobbied hard to stay out of the Bottle Bill, DEQ forced the inclusion into the RMA. And now, once they saw what it would cost to basically carry the load of glass on their own as a sole beverage provider, they are considering wanting to jump into the Bottle Bill. So the legislature's given them time to kind of pitch that. But if they don't convince the legislature, they will be rolled into the RMA, and they'll have to join a PRO. So, I know that was a lot. If you have questions, definitely happy to answer them, and we appreciate your time.
Thanks, Travis. Council, have any questions? I have one question, Travis. So are all these increased costs going to come back to the ratepayer?
So that's... The goal of this is to not do that. And like I mentioned earlier, what prompted DEQ to do this was that their fear was cities wouldn't raise rates to cover that recycling cost. Because before 2018, there was a rebate that covered the trucks and equipment for that, and there wasn't a disposal cost. After 2018, not only did we have the trucks and equipment and labor and all that, but we paid to get rid of it. And sometimes as much as waste. So that's why you're more likely to see it probably at the grocery store. But it's like, where do you want to see that? And like Cindy mentioned, the polymer centers. Before these polymer centers, most plastic was only downcycled. So your plastic bottle was never going to be another medical or food-grade plastic ever again. This new technology actually allows it to be food or medical-grade again. So technology's definitely going gangbusters, and there's a lot of new opportunities. How it will all shake out, we don't know. But we will be back once the plans... Once we know what the plan is actually going to look like. It's very, very much in the rollout phase currently. But we just wanted to get Council kind of...
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I just was curious. I had kind of heard from a few folks throughout town. They hadn't really seen a lot about the Large Bulky Waste Day. I was just wondering if we can do any kind of increased advertising for that next time around so that citizens have a chance to actually utilize that well?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've already talked to staff about some ideas that we have. We're going to create a flyer, and that flyer is going to be used as to post on both the city's website, you know, digital format, and then on Facebook. And then we can distribute the flyers, you know, around town, you know, here, of course, the library, the swim center, all these different places. So, yes, we're definitely going to do a better job of promoting it. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Ork. Go ahead.
I was wondering, would it be possible to send out an email?
Oh, yeah.
Do an email blast?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for anybody, we have an email. We could do an email blast, yeah.
That would... Because when I found out about it too, I was like, did I miss an email? I get a lot of emails, so maybe I missed it. But I, like, that would maybe be a good way, if you're able to do that. And then I did have another question. Thank you for the presentation. It's a lot of good information. I was just curious if the street... If the... What am I trying to say? I'm talking about a conversation. If the... What's the word I'm looking for? Oh my gosh. If the streets impact maintenance on your vehicles, the wear and tear, like, wear and tear on your vehicles... The only word I can think of is quality, but it's not quality. You know what I'm saying?
Condition.
Condition. Jeez Louise, okay. The condition of the streets impact maintenance on your garbage trucks in terms of, like, wear and tear and...
We can definitely ask operations if they've noted any potholes or, like, sides of roads that are an issue. But I haven't heard of anything specifically.
I'm just saying, like, if you have... If there is a correlation between better streets and less maintenance for your vehicles.
Answer's yes.
I mean, it stands to reason. I mean, I'm just kind of translating that into my own personal vehicle.
Sure.
It stands to reason that it would, you know, cause more issues on any vehicle that comes in contact with the road. But I definitely, we could ask Josh about it, just to... But I feel like that's probably a yes.
Okay.
You know, logic.
I mean, I figured it was a yes. I was just wanted to ask the question.
But it's a good question. We've never had that before, so I appreciate you asking.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Travis, Cindy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And for all the data, I tried to put all the websites that I got all that stuff from.
Yeah, there's one on there.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Next up is Jenna, talking about a library update.
Give me two seconds. I'm going to stop there and start mine. Maybe more than two seconds, sorry. No. It's so tricky, guys. I gotta stare at it on the Zoom and... Better? Okay. Like to give you guys an update on the library after you wait for, like, five minutes for me to fix that, so sorry about that. So the library's focus this year has been on expanding the boundaries of what traditionally defines our library, focusing on fostering community space with opportunities to explore and a safe place to make connections and build relationships. We put our own spin on library programming with a focus on people having a positive experience at the library. We've re-envisioned our spaces and programs and materials, which has given us the opportunity to highlight our team's creativity and their abilities. We're offering more intergenerational programming opportunities in order to accommodate people of many different ages into the same program. With some shifting and moving of equipment, we've opened up more space in the middle of the library, allowing us to host larger crowds and increase the visibility and the accessibility of our programs. We've created a discovery alcove. So the original space is on the top left. The before and after pics are kind of epic. So the alcove's now an open-ended STEAM project space that allows for discovery opportunities for all ages. We've started a group of younger volunteers last summer, expanding the age range of our core volunteers. We've continued to provide service opportunities throughout the school year for not only this age, but for all of our volunteers. This morning, we had a shelf reading party at the library, so 13 adult volunteers who aren't at school, right, joined library staff, and we put the entire library back in order. We continue to partner with the Library Foundation. We continue to partner with the Library Foundation. An important piece of that collaboration was helping coordinate the murder mystery fundraiser. We're grateful that so many of you attended, so thank you. The Foundation makes access to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library possible for us, and also supports our outreach Storytime. This Wednesday, we'll present Storytime at the Oregon Garden in partnership with Silver Falls. They also support the Teddy Bear Tea Party. So we were able to expand the capacity of the Tea Party this year by figuring out how to offer multiple seedings. We're so lucky to have such an amazing crew at the library, these are the people that make the magic happen. And I hope we've blown your mind a little bit tonight. We're building something special here, so thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. Anybody have any questions for Jenna? Counsel, Art?
I just wanted to say that the little alcove is really cool, like, kids, anyone can go up to it and just start making something. Last month, you had the eggs, kids could decorate, so it's just a fun little, the kids walk past it and do something, and then we're off to do something else.
We're excited about what that looks like and how it's used all day, right, by different age groups. So right now, there's tools and all kinds of things to build it. So one of the pictures in the slideshow is a smaller, a small child using real needle-nose pliers, right? And part of what he's doing is holding it, and like, even just holding those pliers is an early learning opportunity, right? So there, and then he, and I have another picture where he's figuring out how to put it into the pegboard, right? And those movements are all early learning experiences in a fun way, right? And that's, that's something really cool that we've been able to explore.
Looks good.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Patty.
I got one thing for Jenna, just real quick. This is something I had heard from a few community members, can I talk tonight? Just as far as the Sigmund Room, is that ever going to be used again for like book clubs or rental space or anything like that?
So I'm probably not going to rent it again. So what's the problem is, is that I mostly was crushing people's dreams about that room, because I'm using it a lot. And so mostly what I got to tell them was like, no, all the time, which is not a very fun position to be in, and also not super helpful. So we want to be helpful, and so they, they're often, we often have people use our, just our open space, but I am not in a position where we're not heavily using the room, so probably not.
And we did take it off of the website so that it doesn't look like it's available, and then people have to hear no from Jenna, so...
I don't really like crushing people's dreams.
We do have the community center that's available for rent.
And we weren't actually renting it very often, so, because I was saying no all the time. Great.
Okay, thanks, Jenna.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing for ordinance number 1066, the vacation of right-of-way between 1732 and 1660 North Sixth Ave. And with that, I need to read the script before we do that. Good evening, my name is Brian Quigley, I am the City of State and Mayor, and I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing, the matter of land use file number 5-06/23. A request to vacate the right-of-way between the South property line of 1732 North Sixth Avenue and the North property line of 1660 North Sixth Avenue. This hearing is now open. Vacations of streets and alleys is the subject of Oregon Rides Statues, Chapter 271, Section 130. This statute establishes a criterion of determining that the vacation would not prejudice the public interest. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed towards the approval criterion, or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe to apply to this case. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please submit them electronically to city staff. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application involved here. Continuances may take the form of holding an additional public hearing with oral testimony allowed, or may consist of holding the evidentiary record open for a period of time designated by the city for submittal from the public of written evidence. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of the body to hear and consider this case? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of the commission? I hear none. If you are providing testimony during the public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in this hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for staff introduction. Jennifer.
Okay, so resident Christine Looper, who lives at 1660 North Sixth Avenue, applied for the vacation of a right-of-way between her and 1732 North Sixth Avenue. I believe she has lived there for quite a while, quite a many, many years. And if you look at the map, you can see that East Regis Street, it probably was a stub that was left when they did the subdivision, thinking that it might attach to the subdivision next to it, but as you can see, Mountain Drive is, it's connected, it's not connected, and there is a house there, so it would never go through to the other road. So the, both the neighbors came to me and applied for the vacation of the right-of-way. We had a public hearing with the Planning Commission on March 24th, 2024. That was, the abutters were notified, according to state law, and the Planning Commission recommended to vacate the right-of-way. And all the, the abutters were notified again for this hearing, and a ad was placed in the newspaper as per state law. And I believe that the applicants are here, we don't really have, I didn't see that if they want an opportunity to speak, I don't know if you'd like them to, but that's all I have to say.
Okay. Questions from the council? Counsel, Sims.
Have the residents been taking care of this property over the years?
Yes, yes, they have been. They said that they've been mowing it and taking care of it, yes. Oh, I did want to mention that, I forgot, that there is a water line that goes through the property, and where the Public Works is requesting that there be an easement, a 15 feet, seven and a half feet on each side, but that's part of the order as well. Sorry.
That was my question, I just wanted to verify that.
Anybody else have any questions? Counsel? No?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Art.
Were there any concerns brought up at the Planning Commission that you're aware of?
There weren't, and there were no abutters that came and commented either.
Okay. And besides that easement, Public Works is okay with that situation? Okay.
Okay, is there any other testimony? Any other questions from council? All right, how about a staff summary? Jennifer, put you on spot again.
Sure, everything was done according to state law, and all the, all the abutters were notified, you're, you're just voting, making sure that it's in the public interest, and I think that it is, so...
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. There being no further public testimony, I close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Art.
You guys got anything? Okay, I, oh wait, hold on. Where's my motion?
If you're going to use what's in the packet, the ordinance number in the text is incorrect, the actual ordinance number is 1066.
1066, okay. Do I have to read it, though? Whatever. Just a number?
Yeah, I got it if you want.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1066.
Second.
To vacate the easement.
Sorry.
Or vac...
So it's moved in second?
Right away. As presented.
It's moved to second to approve ordinance number 1066, as presented, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Melanie, will you please pull the counsel on this one as it's an ordinance? Okay, first time for everything.
Counsel, Sims?
Yes.
Counsel, McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel, Patty?
Yes.
Counsel, Art?
Yes.
Counsel, Julia?
Yes.
Thank you. Question passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, that moves us to general business for tonight. Under general business is the Community Improvement Grant Awards. Julia?
Yes, in your packet is a copy of all of the applications that were received. The staff report, which is page 26 and 27 of your packet, just reminds you of the background that as part of your goals and through the budget process, $40,000 was allocated towards a neighborhood or community improvement grant. In February, we met and council provided direction on the program, and so staff got that out quickly, but we knew that we had a pretty short timeframe and turnaround, because it needs to be spent by the end of June in accordance with our fiscal year. We did as much outreach as we could within the timeframe, we advertised it on social media, the city website, city newsletter, announcements were made at community meetings, such as Rotary Chamber and Revitalize Downtown Stateon. The application was launched February 9th, and a deadline of March 29th was set. We received eight applications for the projects totaling $61,185. Attachment one in your packet provides a summary of the project proposals, along with some just basic staff comments on our general thoughts. We did not provide a recommendation to council, because this is really council's allocation to make. In, on page 27 of your packet, we did, sort of under the motion, I have a table that hopefully will help guide you. It's the project name, what was requested, and we will be asking council to allocate what amounts you want to allocate to which projects. And just as a reminder, council is under no obligation to award any funds. If you don't find any applicant, you know, meets the, meets the expectations that you had in mind, or you could allocate the full amount that's requested of an applicant, you can grant a partial amount, or none. So with that, I just recommend that you begin discussion.
Okay, before you do that, we're going to have a public comment again. So Julie Boxler, come on up.
Do I need to state my name, or?
Please, yes.
Julia Boxler, 1660 Mount Jefferson Drive, State in Oregon.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the city council for allocating the funds for community improvement grants. They've, we had them for quite a while, and then they went by the wayside during COVID, and I'm glad to see them back. I think they're always fun and exciting, and aspiring to see what people want to do in their communities. So thank you for allocating those funds, and thank you city staff for reviewing all the eight documents that came in. I wrote for the RDS Event Center at the farmer's market. I actually own that lot, it's 35 by 100 feet, it's in pretty poor shape, I just bought it in October, in hopes to get it prepared for the farmer's market. And staff had a couple of concerns. One was that the funds to improve city property at the city cost savings benefit, which I wasn't sure what a city cost savings benefit was, so if you could ask the staff what that meant, but I didn't know if it had to do maybe with the prevailing wage, it wouldn't be being paid, but the cost of repairing potholes under a $50,000 contract limit should be okay. It could have been about funding improvements on city proper, on city property, but I don't know how that's different from the sidewalk repairs in West Town that were previously awarded in the grant, or in this grant process, or how it might be different than landscaping a city alley at the corner of Fifth and Burnett, or a sidewalk at The Grove, or providing dog stations and bike racks. If these were procured by the city, they would also have to go out for bid, I would assume. And the city staff didn't comment that way towards any of the other projects. And then the other concern was about funding the toilets, as this should be, they thought that the funds you're allocating should be fund one-time projects and not ongoing costs, but RDS isn't required to have toilets downtown all year long. We're required to have toilets for events, and this is a one-time seasonal event that lasts 17 weeks. And it's cheaper for us to leave the toilets down there and have them cleaned every week than to pick them up each week and put them back there. It also in turn benefits TGI Fridays and Summer Fest with their ability to use the porta-potties. And last year, the city did fund our porta-potties with a really nice donation to RDS, so we could always use the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. No one else has signed up, but any else? Public comment? Doesn't sound like it. Okay. With that, council decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Art.
I went over these, and I kind of came up with some allocations, looking at all the projects, and to Julie's point, I like to see, well, I will admit that I wasn't in favor of the $40,000, because we did allocate this, it is fun to see what people wanted to do with the, with the money. So I was trying to find a way that we could help everyone with their projects, and I do, am I allowed to, I have, I made copies of what I, am I allowed to pass that out to the council?
As long as you're sharing it publicly, you're sharing the information that you're, maybe read it out loud.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, so let me, okay, let me pass that.
Yeah, and give us a copy, please.
Yeah, there is one for you, Julia. So if I may, Mr. Mayor, because I didn't, so my thought process, and I apologize for the scribbles, but my thought process was to go through, and there are applications on here that were for either events or things that would benefit kind of the broader community, and I would think more people. And so, and they weren't for like specific people's property. And so in that way, I kind of leaned toward giving those opportunities, either all of or more of what they were asking. If it had to do with someone's specific property, but still benefited the community, I was looking at like a 50%, specifically if they had a match. And there were some on here that didn't have a match at all, and so I'll just read them out loud. So going down the list, sidewalk renewal at Marketplace at The Grove, 5,000; neighborhood free library, 500; Revitalize Downtown Stateon Event Site, 8,100; the RDS bike racks and dog stations, I put 7,450; light-up Historic Downtown, 5,000; the corner of North Fifth and Burnett, I drove past there. This application didn't give a lot of information on how they wanted to use that money, so I'm kind of a little on the fence on that. I did drive past there, and it does look like it needs fence repair, and the alley needs to be landscaped. There were four people on the application, so I thought that did benefit four residents, not just one, the community, father-daughter dance, 7,000, and then the new signage for the Historic Kekler Ballroom, 1937. That one is a bit lower, because while I see the benefit in what they're trying to do, they didn't have a match for what they were going to also contribute, and then also I felt like the sign, all these other... And then also, I felt like the sign, all these other things benefited multiple people and not just one building or one person. So I'm definitely amendable to this. This was just kind of my, my first kind of go around and I wanted kind of a starting point.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims?
I took a fairly similar path. I looked at longevity, how long, it's gonna affect people for how long and the greatest effect for the community. And I did, I did a ranking myself. I just ranked one through eight, what I thought were the best projects. And there, and there's a couple of projects I, I have somewhat of a problem with. The corner of North Fifth and Burnett, there really wasn't any estimates and it's basically clear and brush and putting a fence up. So I, I really, I have a problem with spending $10,000 on that project. And the community father-daughter dance, I couldn't tell if there was tickets that's offsetting that cost. That seemed like pretty extravagant to me. I mean, it's a good cause, I got two daughters. I mean, I get it, but that's an awful lot to pay for a father-daughter dance. It only affects a small number of folks. And I could see the signage for the Kekler Ballroom, that's only affecting one business. I mean, we're paying for $7,500 for a sign for, what was it? $9,685 for one, one sign for one business. So I, I have some issues with that one, but all the other projects, I think we should fund in full personally.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Julia?
I'm in exact agreement with Counselor Sims actually on his ranking. I, I, yeah, it feels to me that the father-daughter dance is, it's a nice like activity, but yeah, when I was looking at just the estimates, it just feels like something that first you could do a lot cheaper, like if you were going to do it. It just didn't need that much. And also, I just think there are other organizations, you know, there's other nonprofits, churches have historically done that type of thing. There's a lot of different types of organizations that have done those type of events. And it is something I think you could offset with ticket sales, which it did seem like there was actually a plan for some ticket sales. So not that I don't think it's a bad idea, it's just, I think of the longevity, like some, like I think about the sidewalk renewal. Yeah, it's, it's buying owners' business, but it benefits, I mean, I think the whole community pretty substantially. I mean, it's one of the most trafficked parts of downtown. I think what RDS is doing at the event site is fantastic. You know, and actually to get to, to maybe Julie's point there, if, if it's a huge issue to, if it's a huge issue that we're like funding those portable toilets, because some of this is matched, maybe we could just shift some of the match dollars like over to the toilets and then, you know, just shift a little of the dollars around kind of over what we're on. But anyway, short, short answer. And then I think maybe if there's a little left over doing some of the North Fifth and Burnett, but it, yeah, even that just felt, it just didn't feel quite as much like the community benefit in terms of when I'm looking at these other projects. I can see some pretty clear, some clear long-term benefit on all the rest of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ort?
My thought for the RDS Event Site, I was looking at maybe the comments that were being made. And I, I don't think I'm, I didn't mention this, so I apologize. I talked to Julia earlier about, so if the parking lot is something that we are using as an event space and it is benefiting its economic development, it's benefiting businesses and the whole community, and as a city, we should probably consider what we need, what we want to do with that in revamping it so that it can be used effectively as that space. And Julia mentioned that any funding of that would come out of like a facilities budget, but I didn't know if that was something that we wanted to talk about and take on or because then it's done kind of the way that we envision it. Or, or do we let RDS kind of take that over? So that's my first question. And then also, I am kind of in agreeance that the porta potties, it's one use for like the summer, for those summer months. I feel like that is a one-use kind of thing, it isn't a year-round. And it's for a specific duration of time, so I'm, I'm okay with it using. That's why I did the 81 and I didn't do the full amount because I kind of took out those repairs in that instance, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty?
Yeah, yeah, I think I agree with some of the sentiments that have already been stated here. I, I have a question and have to hear the response after I'm done here. Just as far as this breakdown that Counselor Ort produced, is this amount roughly the total that we have? And then the other thing I was just kind of curious about, I really conceptually liked the community father-daughter dance. I think that that's, that's kind of taken place in past years and it was really cool. You know, I, I have questions about the total too. I was kind of curious about the event planner and the budget for that and just what that's gonna be and if there's any cost savings possibilities there, partial funding opportunities that we can do for that. Anyways, I, I like the idea of attempting to partially fund most of these and then the ones that are a better community good, fully funding those and then maybe less so some of these other things, such as signs for single businesses and things like that. So that's where I'm standing with this one right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ort?
I did have a concern about, Julia, this is what I didn't talk to you about. The lights, I love the idea of lighting up downtown. I think that looks fantastic when you walk streets that are like that. My concern though is that the lights, they said they're gonna purchase our solar and the intent is to try to light it up during winter months when it's darker, but that's also a time when it's more cloudy and rainy, so they're not as effective. So, I mean, I know that's not something that we are in control of, but that is maybe just a little concern of mine that it's not gonna do what it's intended if that's the kind of purchase. Also, I have a daughter and I see the benefit of a father-daughter relationship. I really think that anyone who wants to take on and tackle that kind of event, I love supporting that. So I, while I see that you guys are concerned about giving that full amount, I'm okay with that, but I would like to consider at least funding a portion of that if you're not interested in doing it all, so not just scrapping it totally.
My recollection is it happened in our community two or three times before and I don't know the origin, origination of it, but. Oh, it was the library, that's right, it was tied to the library, yeah. And it was ticket sales, right, correct? Yeah, I remember it was pretty popular, in fact, it was sold out, I think, both times. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims?
I mean, we could always go line by line and see which one everybody has a consensus on and just go one through eight and determine which ones we want to fund and which ones we have majority support for.
And, and just to Counselor Patty's question, Counselor Ort's total came to 39,987, so.
Saving a little money there. 13 dollars.
Counselor McDonald, any comments before we move to council decision?
Yeah, I was kind of doing some math too, but I have some of the similar concerns. I, I tend to kind of favor the projects that are gonna have some, some permanence and not necessarily one-time events. Some things are gonna have lasting impact. As a father with no daughters, I don't know if, I, I, I was joking. It's, it's, I like the concept of a father-daughter dance, I wish I had one to attend with, but I, I share the other counselors' concerns about the cost. I think that's, that's quite a big chunk of change for, for a one-time event. Again, I think I favor more the, the improvements gonna, that are gonna, you know, be permanent, the, you know, the RDS Event Site. I know, you know, whether with that repaving or whatever we're gonna do there, that's gonna, that's used a lot, especially over the summer with the farmer's market and such. I like the idea of the bike racks and dog stations. I really love the lighting up the historic downtown. Yeah, however you make it work, I know the, you know, the aesthetic of having lights up during the winter months, you know, around the holidays is, is, is pretty cool. You know, when the nights are long and it helps, you know, keep people out and about so much if there's, if it's well lit and there's, there's, you know, pretty things to look at, so. Those are my only thoughts really. I think I probably, I don't know, the, the last two projects, the dance and the signage, I don't know, I don't know, those, those are gonna be probably no's for me, but the rest, the rest I'm, I'm pretty in favor for.
Mr. Mayor?
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Julia.
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, you've got the council decision, how you want to do this?
So, Mr. Mayor, we just want to, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, do we want us to just work through then, down kind of what Counselor Sims was saying? So on this first one sidewalk, I'm in favor of doing the whole amount. I don't know if there's anyone who's opposed to that.
I'm in favor of the whole amount also.
Okay, so am I gonna keep track of this?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. I'm, I'm in favor of doing the whole amount.
All right. The Neighborhood Free Library Station seems like a very small number, so I'm in favor of that full amount, $500. I also love that they applied for 500, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the library.
Yeah. Free library. I am in favor of the full amount on the RDS Event Site. I know that we might want to have some conversation, I don't know if the other amount that Counselor Ort put forward was the 8100, sorry, 8100, so, yeah, where, where do we sit on that?
Go ahead, Counselor Sims.
I like the full amount on the downtown, the RDS Event Site. I mean, they're gonna fix some potholes and do some paving and I, and it's used every week. I mean, the city uses it every week during the summer for, for the Saturday, Wednesday market and other events, so I really like doing that. I know they're working on the city lot, but there is some pretty nasty potholes in there that could be filled and.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry.
Counselor Patty, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, maybe stepping back to a higher level conversation on this one. So ultimately, I'm, I'm looking at this as, you know, a city, city asset. And I'm wondering if the funding stream to pave that, and I'm not disagreeing that it needs to be done, but I'm wondering if the funding or revenue needs to come from somewhere else that's not intended for community grant opportunities to match those dollars or whatnot with RDS? So I'm just wondering if, if we want to pull that out of this bucket and perhaps talk about funding that in a different manner. I don't know, Julia, if that's something worthy of consideration, just based on our conversations and that being something maybe not intended from the community grant standpoint?
Yeah, and getting to, to Julie's question about the, the cost basis thing, that, that was clearly poor wording, but I think Counselor Patty really hit the nail on the head where the, the idea is that it would be like somebody applying for a grant to paint the inside of our community center. You know, it's, it's saving us money somewhere, but is that really what we should be spending the, the grant on? If you guys do, that's totally fine, but, but that is something that you could ask us to potentially, you know, look at in other ways and grant the, the private piece that would be the extension of the farmer's market and even the, the portable toilets. That, that was just staff's opinion if council wanted to, to fund a seasonal thing like that, that's your choice.
And, and to that point, would that then even be considered as, as part of this community grant process or would it be just from a separate, like revenue stream and a separate part of the budget if that's the way we did it?
For the parking lot or?
Yeah, parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if, if you gave me direction tonight, I would likely modify our budget to include something like that and then look at, you know, go through the budget process for that.
Yeah, I think for me, I'm in favor of some kind of spending measures like that just because for me, the community grant was to tackle these challenges outside of, you know, city infrastructure that we need to fix as good neighbors. And so for me, I do want to fund this idea, I think it's good, but I don't think the community grants the mechanism to do it. So that's just my own opinion on that, that line item.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Julia?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Is, as long as, I think my main thing would just be, as long as it can be somewhat expedited on our end, I would, I would kind of hate to have them be, you know, doing all the work on their end, getting it all fixed and yet our, you know, our piece isn't fixed in time for the summer. So that's my main concern with, with having us do it. So, yeah, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, Julia, or what a timeline would be able to?
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't know that I can commit to a timeline like that because we haven't had any conversations internally and we've got a lot of projects on our plate, so that, I just can't make a promise on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims, go ahead.
So I, I like Counselor Patty's line of thought on that. I think, I mean, we could always take out the $1,600 that's for the asphalt patch on the parking lot. I think that's, I think that's what's referring to the city's parking lot and make it a grant for whatever it is minus $1,600.
So yeah, I just want to, yeah, point everybody to page 48 of your packet, that's the, the breakdown of that parking lot. So they've got paved privately owned lot leased to RDS for events is $12,000. Patched city parking lot and striped city parking lot together, that's about 2,800. The portable toilets is 2,100 and then lease of private lot to RDS for farmer's market, TGI Fridays and Holiday Fest 23 events is $2,300. And then that's, I guess, sorry, I'm just continuing. So that's the total cost. They're requesting 10,900 of that, so they would match the lease, donate that and then half the paving of the privately owned lot.
We could do the 9, 9,300, I think is what I got for the amount, do that amount.
I think it'd be 81 because I think it's the striping and the patching.
Oh. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I like that too, I like doing 81 and making a, a budget line for those other two items separately.
Okay.
So keeping tally, if that is the consensus of council, that would leave you $21,400 remaining.
Okay, so that moves on to the bike racks and the dog stations?
Yeah, I like the RDS Bike Racks and Dog Stations for the full amount.
I'm also for the full amount, I really like that idea.
Do they, Mr. Mayor, do they have any matching, if you guys look at?
There's an in-kind donation of $1,200.
So was there consensus on that or are you guys still researching?
I mean, I have 7,450 on there, so that's my suggestion.
If it helps, if you were to grant that or off, have consensus, that would leave you $13,800 remaining, just if that helps you at all.
I kinda have a question, and this, I don't know, maybe it's for staff, maybe this is for the council, I have no idea. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Do, do we need four bike racks in town like this? Like, did, like?
For real.
Anybody?
I, I can't say definitively, um, I, I think that there are definitely kids that bike in, in town and around town. I did hear at the RDS, um, meeting last week that, you know, there's some, some kids, youth, whatever, that will leave their bikes in front of store entrances, and sometimes that can be problematic. So I would say, yes, there probably is a need for the, the bike racks. Whether or not there's a need for that many of the dog waste stations, I maybe would question. But I, you know, it's, there is, um, anecdotally, there, it sounds like there is definitely a need.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor.
I did thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Patty, because I, I was thinking, apologize, I can't remember where they wanted to place the eight, but I felt like that was kind of a lot on third Ave, and so I would love for RDS to consider if we did grant that amount and they did do eight to like spread them out, maybe on second Ave as well, and make them more accessible and not just on third Ave. And the bike racks, maybe, spread them out.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Julia.
I would be amenable to, um, reducing the number of dog poop dispensers.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there's 225 a shot there, Councilor Julia.
I know, uh, I don't know, maybe down to six. If we're, if we're looking to cut a little bit, I mean, I would maybe bring it down to six, and maybe, I mean, I'd also be open to cutting one bicycle rack. I'm not as attached to this project as I am to the other ones, to be honest, so I'm okay cutting that a little bit.
Guess you don't have a dog, then.
I don't, actually.
I'm just kidding.
It's true.
All right.
I've heard they come good for diapers, though, too, just having...
All right, let's make some movement here.
Let's do 71, then. That's two bike, two dog poops, right?
Two, two dog poops left?
Yeah.
All right.
I also heard somebody say eliminating a bike rack, too, and that's like a thousand dollars.
I'm okay cutting one.
Yeah, I am, that would probably, that'd be fine.
What if we cut it to an even six?
Okay.
Yes.
Six thousand?
I'm, I'm looking at, is there any specifics in here about where these are gonna be placed?
You know, in, in what we received, there is not, um, but my, I think there might've been a glitch in the submittal because it, it sounded like they thought that they had. I, but they, I know that their intent is to get property owner, you know, do it places where property owners are, um, wanting it and, and appreciating that they are gonna be, but they'll need to work through public works and get, you know, have, have them installed appropriately and all that stuff, and so we'll, we'll make sure that they're in locations that aren't problematic.
Not just on there, they're talking the whole downtown area, right?
That was their discussion with the RDS, they were talking, and they knew they had to work together on it, so.
So I'm hearing 6,000 there, is that correct?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
So that leaves you 15,400.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of the light up historic downtown at the full amount.
Seconded.
Thirded.
Yep.
All right, you gotta, go ahead, Councilor.
Can we, how can we talk to them about possibly, um, I don't know, uh, with my concern? I mean, they're gonna do it, with how they're gonna do it, but I think it's a valid concern.
So, I mean, we could, you, you can, we can allocate the money and we can express those concerns and see if they have a response to that, um, you know, if that is, I mean, I, I, my guess is that they have thought about it, and then I think that there are some, um, you know, that they're using something that's gonna work, but we can certainly broach that.
Just as long as we can pass that along, that's all I, I just appreciate that.
I would agree, I think, how are, how are we powering these lights? Are the businesses, are we plugging them into the business power?
They would be solar powered.
I have Counselor's same concerns about how that's gonna work. I think you're gonna end up probably having to have them normally powered.
So, I was gonna say, so perhaps if, if you wanted to authorize that amount, you can direct staff to talk with them to assure that they're installing a light that will, that will be lit up during the winter months, and if it's not solar powered, but they have another arrangement, that that would be okay?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know the, I guess, the electrical infrastructure down there, but is, is there a way for the city to pay for that, the electricity, if that's the case, if they end up going that direction, or is, or would the businesses have to front, front that cost?
I, I don't think that there is...
It's not really set up for it.
Yeah. That'd be, that'd be quite, I don't know, it just depends on how you string it up, right?
Yeah.
The, the logistics behind that would be interesting to me, I guess, at the, in the least.
Sounds like you have the direction on that one, yes, okay.
Yes.
All right. Council, keep going.
Do we have 10,400 left?
You have 10,400 left.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty.
This next line item, uh, corner of North Fifth and Burnett. Uh, I think everyone sorta has some concerns for the amount there and the level of work that's really gonna entail. I, I'd be in favor of at least reducing this to a partial amount, if not, yeah, that's where I'm at on it.
Mr. Mayor, uh, yes, I would agree, I'd agree with that. I mean, of the three remaining, and since we have $10,000, I, I think actually the one I do like the most is the father-daughter dance. And so maybe we could have the discussion on that first and see how much we have remaining after that, if the council's okay with that, yeah. I definitely am for, um, funding, the, now that we have 10,000 left, I'm for funding some of the father-daughter dance. Maybe it's more at like a 5,000 level.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Sims.
I would, I wouldn't, I would be amenable to splitting it between the sign and the father-daughter dance, the 10,400.
I'm, I'm a little bit more open to maybe splitting it between the North Fifth Avenue and the, the North Fifth Avenue and the father-daughter. The new sign, that one is harder for me, 'cause it feels like it does just benefit one business. I think that, I found the two, like, the corner and the father-daughter a little bit more.
What if we did 25, or, excuse me, 5,000 to the father-daughter and split them remaining between the two?
I like that.
Yeah, I like that, too.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
It's good.
So that would be 5,000 towards the father-daughter dance and then 2700? I can't do math, that's why I have calculators.
2700.
2700, I can do math, um, to the corner of Fifth and Burnett and 2700 to the sign at, for the historic collector ballroom. So...
Hold on, Councilor McDonald.
My, my only concern with that is, is, is if we, is what they're gonna be able to get done at Fifth and Burnett for that much money. Does that, I mean, it, it seems like a lot of money to ask for, for that spot to begin with, but if they only have that much, is it just not gonna happen, or what, what actually gets done for that amount is, would be my question?
Well, and I could certainly reach out to her and, and ask that question and make, you know, if, if it's not meaningful, um, we don't have to spend the money. If it is something that is meaningful, then that's money that is available that wouldn't otherwise be available.
Well, I'm not sure, but I would imagine we could probably, uh, generate a work party over there, too, just volunteer, come together to help them, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Uh, if I may, I drove past there, and so it is, it's an alley, um, and there is quite a bit of overgrowth, and then there is a fence that needs either replacing or repairing. There's, um, one part of it, there's sections missing, and then there's one part that's being held up by a board.
Did, did, I mean, does it look like, I, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to go look at it, is there anything that requires a professional contractor?
Uh, the fence, probably. Or no, I mean, knowledge of...
Otherwise, it's just kind of general labor that needs to...
Yeah, there's like, there's some law, there's a tree that looks like it was cut down, there's logs that need to be taken away. I mean, there's stuff over there that can be done that, um, that wouldn't require like a licensed contractor, I guess.
I tend to lean towards where you're, you were originally thinking, Councilor, on the, on the 5,000 for that particular project. Or then maybe splitting the rest between the other two. Just, just 'cause I know that's, if that's what I said originally, I wanna focus on, on project permanence and, and lasting effects, so I think that's gonna be where I would lean, tend to lead, what putting money into would be an, an actual physical improvement, so, just my thought.
Okay, we're almost there.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, I tend to agree that I, I think I value that, that improvement more than the new signage. So I think I would, I would be in favor of doing the 5,000 for there, uh, and maybe, maybe stepping, okay, if it's just me, what I'd, what I'd do is probably just not do any for the new signage for the ballroom, um, and then just split that full 10,000 between the Fifth and the father-daughter. It's, it is hard for me to justify in my mind, like, just a sign for a business, and I know it's not just a sign, but it's just, it's, uh, when I'm comparing it against the other kind of common goods where it feels like there's some strong arguments, that's where I'm leaning. But if not, I'm, I'm amenable to that as well.
Well, the, the other problem is that I think that the, the sign project is something that it, it probably doesn't get done if we don't do the full amount. If we just do it partial, then they're not gonna have the money to throw in on the rest, would be probably my guess. So either we, I think we either do it in full or we don't. And we, they can reapply next year or whenever, but, um, that's a lot of money for a sign, but I, but I think, looking, look, just looking at the information in front of me here, I think that looks like that's, there's, there's a single line item for the costs, and if they don't have that, then where does the rest of the money come from?
I actually agree with the Councilor McDonald on that, that point.
Then, if that's the case, I would just be in favor of splitting the, that remaining 10,400 between the Fifth and Burnett and the father-daughter dance, and then not out of killing any towards the sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm pretty lukewarm on the sign myself, so.
So would that be 5,200 to each of those? 5,200 for the father-daughter dance and 5,200 for the Fifth and Burnett?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Sounds like you have consensus, Counselor Patty? Yes? Okay. You have the direction?
So we need a motion, I'm asking for a motion.
Can you just read off the amounts for...
Yep, so, um, basically, we're requesting a motion from council on which projects to allocate funding to and in what amount, and what we have is, um, and I think the, the, the best thing would be for me to read this, and if you guys agree with it, say "so moved" and somebody's seconding it, that would, that, rather than having to repeat this, okay? So, the allocations are for the sidewalk renewal marketplace at the Grove, $10,000; neighborhood free library station, $500; revitalized downtown state and event site, $8,100; RDS bike racks and dog stations in downtown core, $6,000; light up historic downtown, $5,000; corner of North Fifth and Burnett, $5,200; community father-daughter dance, $5,200; and new signage for historic collector building, zero dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
All those in favor?
Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
That leaves us, the next item of business, which is resolution number 1099, Ida Street pavement and water system improvements contract award, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight for you is, uh, resolution 1099, awarding a contract for the 2024 Ida Street pavement and water system improvement project to Pacific Excavation in the amount of 792,250. You have enclosures of the bid opening and the bid tact relationship, excuse me, that was opened on April 4th, um, and resolution 1099. The water main on Ida Street, um, is shown in our master plan, needs to be upsized, we don't have fire flows downtown like we should, we don't have really any kind of, uh, great water flow downtown, so this is a master plan project, and due to the, uh, nature of the paving project, we decided to do this project so we don't have to cut that street open in the next few years to, uh, improve and upsize that line. You all are aware of where we've been in our streets and what we've done to review the, uh, the indexing of our streets. You know, we went, uh, had GRI look at all our streets and rate them several years ago. From that came a capital improvement plan, and in that capital improvement plan, Ida Street from first to fourth was the highest priority, uh, and so this year we are actually going to be milling and overlaying that, uh, and installing new ADA ramps from first to fourth. And so that's what this project is. We had, uh, four bidders, I believe it was, yeah, four bidders we had. Pretty good spread there, um, 792,250 was below our engineer's estimate, um, and we have worked with this contractor before, reputable contractor, local contractor, and after reviewing all the bids, going through the bids, line item by line item, staff recommends awarding the contract to Pacific Excavation in the amount of 792,250, uh, as outlined in the improvement documents or contract documents. So your options are approve, uh, resolution 1099, awarding this contract, uh, or reject all bids, and with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Okay, before we do that, Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can you remind me, when will this project start? Or, yeah?
Well, we'll probably award the bid or get a notice of intent, we put the notice of intent out, we'll probably, we have one week of an appeal period after tonight, um, and so we will probably be looking at, uh, three weeks, I'm guessing at the max, before they start. Well, I'm guessing it's gonna be end of July. They'll be done with the water line before the end of June, so then it's just amount of scheduling and milling and overlaying and doing ADA ramps.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so this is going all the way to fourth?
That's correct.
Right? Are there sidewalks?
There will be.
There will, okay, we're putting in sidewalks on...
There'll be new sidewalks, that's correct.
Ida to fourth, okay, thank you.
All right, Council, any other questions before I open it to public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilor Julia.
Uh, just curious, what was the engineer's estimate? You said it was below...
I don't have it in top of my head, I don't remember, though.
No worries.
I see a lot of numbers all day long, in fact, it's budget season, so I see more than enough.
More than enough, okay, but under, I like that, okay.
Okay, any other Council questions before I go to public comment? Another opportunity for public comment on resolution 1099. I don't see that anyone has any public comment, council discussion. Council decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty?
Yep, first off, it's a lot of money, but I motion we approve resolution number 1099, awarding the contract for the 2024 Ida Street pavement and water system improvements project to Pacific Excavation Incorporated in the amount of 792,250.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve resolution 1099, Ida Street pavement and water system improvements contract award in the amount of 792,250 to Pacific... System Improvements Contract Award in the amount of $7,92,250 to Pacific Excavation Incorporated. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
An opportunity for communication from city staff. Julia?
I have a few. I just wanted to remind council or let, or let council know that next week is Volunteer Appreciation Week and we plan to have some appreciative posts and we will have some appreciative items for our council and board and commissions in the, in the coming days, weeks. We've, we've ordered some stuff. It's not going to be quite in yet, but it should be in by next Thursday, this Thursday. It should, it will be out next week. We will get them out. I also wanted just to remind the council, I'm, just because it's a different date, but we're having a special work session on the 29th to focus on streets. We're hoping to do that from 5:00 to 6:30. We will provide food and then if you are interested in staying, you can stay for a new budget orientation meeting or just a orientation refresher meeting, if you wanted to do that as well. And then, last but not least, I just wanted to mention that we had the police forum last Thursday. It was decently attended. We had about 16 to 18 people there. Certainly would have liked to have more people in attendance, but the people that, that were there were engaging in conversation and had some good questions and we had, we, we tried something new. We had some interactive polling. It was a little clunky, but I think it will, it's something that I kind of am interested in continuing. It was kind of fun just to give people the opportunity to chime in without having to stand up and ask questions specifically. And then we also did a post-meeting survey, which I want to start doing after public meetings where we're getting people's email addresses and then we'll send them a survey, a Survey Monkey survey, basically, after the meeting. Just to, more, not necessarily on the topics themselves, but the meeting and just was the meeting, did it meet your expectations? Were there things that we could do differently in the future? So, that is something that I think will be helpful going forward and we got some great feedback from that as well. Chief Johns, I don't know if you wanted to add anything or if you guys had any questions of Gwen from the forum. I'm not seeing you jump up. Okay. That is all I have.
Thanks, Julia. Still my thunder on the volunteer thing, but that's okay. We'll do that next week as well. So, I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront. There's a lot of positions within the community or within the city that wouldn't function if it wasn't for volunteers, so I really appreciate the efforts everyone puts forward towards that. Having said that, I want to appreciate and acknowledge the council's participation in our work session with the, with the, with the county commissioners. We had a discussion about some old grant awards and that was good for the council to help, help me and be involved in that process, so thank you for doing that. And I thank you for guys for going to the chamber awards as well. I saw a lot of money of you there, so that was great. The last thing I will say is, I think I would like to push for us to get the charter review discussed, reviewed, looked at, so we can get it on the agenda. I think it's something that we need to really take a look at, dive into it. Our charter, as you well know, is in need of a review and in need of a reorganization, in my opinion, based on several of my discussions with my counterparts, just in the immediate vicinity and across the state. We need to take a deep dive into it and see where we can do some modifications to it. So, I would like to see that put on the agenda sometime in the summer, maybe June, July-ish, start, at least start the process. So, with that, counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Julia.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the grant applicants for the community projects grants. I do, I, I really enjoyed that process and I was really excited to see just all the different applications for that. I think it's fantastic to be able to be, yeah, to just be able to assist in, in allowing these community projects to get done. So, I just wanted to thank all the applicants for that and I'm excited to see everyone making this place so much better.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Or.
So, to the point of the city law, fixing the potholes and striping, you need a direction from us, don't you, to add that to the budget?
I kind of felt like I got that direction.
I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that was clear, that we, that we wanted to do that, right? Okay, just making sure. And then, so, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month and I just, I said this last year and I just wanted to point it out again to the adults in the audience and whoever's listening that we have some great audible apps that read us books. We have one from the library called Libby and then also the audible app. They're fantastic. I use them with my kids, but I want to stress and give a caution that they don't have parental controls on them. And so, you need to be just, as parents or guardians, just really active in what your kids are listening to because they're, they have access to everything on there. So, just be mindful of that.
All right, that's it. That's called tonight. Thank you. Remember, motion meeting adjourned.